To the agenda.
Yes, there is a personnel ad for the appointment of a long-term substitute for the library media specialist position at Seneca Intermediate School that we finalized this afternoon. Thank you for the board members who responded to my text messages regarding that addition to the agenda, but other than that, there are no changes.
Then I need a motion to approve the agenda with the added change. It's already on this one. Okay. Motion by Barb, second by Dale. Are there any questions? All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. And Mag is not on, correct?
And is open for public review as well as comment. So we encourage any of our community members, staff members, students to review that plan in whatever level or detail you wish and then provide feedback to us. The plan, while we have submitted that plan to New York State, we know that it meets all of the criteria that the state is looking for, but operationally, there are some gaps. There are things missing such as when students will start, for example, their times, what their schedules will look like. And that is because we are awaiting further guidance. In that plan, we see the safety primarily that the district will undertake if students are permitted on campus. We also reinstate what we have stated at all of our board meetings, which is that if we cannot open our buildings to staff and students safely, we will not be opening our buildings to staff and students. That is probably our foremost underlying and overriding statement. So, you know, there is an awful lot behind that and a dedication to make sure that if we have students or staff in our schools, that we will do it in a safe manner. We have also stated that we are prioritizing the requests of parents and guardians. And that would be whether they request e-learning 100% or remote learning. We're referring to that as e-learning, electronic learning, whether that be hybrid, meaning that they spend some time on campus a week and the rest of the time through an e-learning scenario, or if it is as in-person as we can provide. We don't know at this point in time if we will even have the option of providing five-day-a-week person-to-person instruction in our schools. But we will prioritize and follow the requests of the parents and guardians for what they wish for their children. We are going to be focusing on e-learning. We believe that no matter what happens in the fall, the default will end up being e-learning. We may be back and then may have to shut down for any number of reasons and focus on remote or e-learning. So we are going to focus on that. We are going to employ technologies that are essentially cutting edge. We will work with the best instructional practices and adapt them to an e-learning environment so that we can be highly successful with our students in that setting. We are going to prioritize the social and emotional well-being of our students and staff. We will be assessing the emotional and social well-being of the students as well as the staff on a weekly basis to ensure that everyone is working at an optimum level. And then when we do return students, if that's permitted, we will do so on a gradual spectrum. We know that it will take time to master and institutionalize the safety rules. We have put them in place weeks ago, and yet we still struggle as adults and as a small number of adults to actually follow them on a routine basis. So when teachers come back, we know that they will come back. We will provide training for them and will provide at least one week of opportunity where students will not be on campus, but we will have staff on so that we can ensure that they have, are up to speed and have been appropriately trained in personal protective equipment, policies, procedure, hygiene, cleaning processes, all of those factors, because we know that they need to master them and we need to master them before we can expect our students to follow them. I also know, and I sent an email out earlier to our staff, that there's a relatively high amount of anxiety over the fact that we don't know. We anticipate that, well, yeah, we know that the governor this week will provide some guidance as far as what will be permitted for our public schools. That will then likely be followed very quickly by New York State Education Department guidance, New York State Health Department guidance, probably follow-through Cat County guidance, and then it will come to us and we'll be able to make some decisions based upon that. As we do so, we will continue to solicit input from parents, community members, and our staff, and revise the plan as it needs to be done. So, you know, I guess I don't want to say stay tuned, but essentially where we are right now isn't too far from where we were last week, but where we will be a week from now, I anticipate will be much further along with that guidance. Thank you.
Questions, anyone?
Yes, that. That is correct. The question was, didn't the governor indicate by Friday? And we are anticipating that this week, probably Friday at 4:00, he will provide guidance to us so that we can worry about it all weekend and not have much time to work on it. But the sooner the better, but we're prepared to implement and make changes next week, Monday and Tuesday.
Okay. And next, we have our strategic planning presentation.
Okay, if we can bring that up on the big screen. As Mr. Miller is bringing that up, let me just start by thanking the strategic planning team members that are on this remote and digital board meeting and those who are in attendance. In no particular order, everyone was an amazing participant in this process. Penny Beatty, Director of Staff Development, and Mark Bieler, Deputy Superintendent, Karen McGarrah, Assistant Superintendent, Chris Seibert, High School Principal, Carrie John, Board Member, Kristy Osgood, Transportation and Teaching, Sandy Brundage, City Recreation Commission, Sue Schnauffer, Instructional Coach, Gail Pavone, Elementary Principal, myself. I'll get to the remaining team members in just a second. I will also add, while Rob and Levi are bringing that up, that I hope that you will sense a level of excitement as I start talking about the strategic planning process that we've undergone over the last year-plus. Our journey started last May when I had the opportunity here. Anthony Kim, a world-renowned expert in strategic planning and mission crafting. I heard him in a superintendent's meeting in Niagara Falls, and that led to a book study with the administrators during our administrative retreat on the book, The New Rules for School, which seemed really interesting, but in the light of COVID is even more interesting and appropriate. That conversation led to a board conversation, and Mr. John and Dr. McCune accompanied me to a multiple-day strategic planning series of meetings in Denver, and we came back fully energized and excited, and we launched our strategic planning initiative in December with approximately 50 community members, staff members, students, members of the Seneca Nation at a retreat in November at the Casino and Event Center in Salamanca. And over the next several months, we really got started into the conversation of strategic planning for the district. If my level of excitement gets too much, I could literally talk for hours about this. I'm going to try not to, to be respectful of everyone's time, but I will kind of give you a spoiler alert. Working through this plan and our first deliverable is an important milestone in this process, and I hope that during this conversation, if team members that were participating in the strategic planning have something else to add, I would invite them to unmute themselves as team members from the strategic planning team and provide any comments that they would have as a team member. The final conversation that I will have before I jump into this part of the conversation is for those members on the Zoom call or those members who were on staff, whether they be board members or other staff members, that remembered our last real official venture into strategic planning was really 2009. And at that point in time, it was a different district, it was a different climate, it was a different school environment as a whole. And I think that you will see in this plan, much like going out to dinner and having a great meal, you eat with your eyes first, if I can make that analogy. And we've really tried in this initial foray into our strategic plan for 2020 until 2025 to really allow you the opportunity to see both graphically and visually the messaging that we're trying to portray. And we've made a concerted effort to tie both text, which is important, to the visual representations, which is so critical in this day and age, particularly with the COVID as a backdrop and the urgency and importance of Zoom and other technological platforms that don't allow for face-to-face. What we did not want to have happen in this plan was a lot of text in a binder on a shelf that never came to life. And I think the initial commentary from team members and board members when this was shared with you, I think we've done a nice job of hitting that mark. So with that, we'll go on to the first slide. So our objectives, keep going, please. One more. Yep. There we go. Okay. So within our strategic planning initiative, we first assembled our strategic planning steering committee, which was designed to represent the voice of stakeholder groups, not individual positions, but voices of groups of people. Often, when you have diverse stakeholder groups, you have representatives that come, and sometimes their voice drowns out the strategic stakeholder groups. So we really wanted to have diversity of our stakeholders. We really actively tried to solicit and build community and buy-in through surveys and stakeholder empathy interviews. Just very briefly, empathy interviews are conversations that are designed to elicit reactions and responses from individuals. They're not yes or no answers. They're hopefully designed and asked in a way with our partners from Education Elements, the outside group that we partnered with, to help us navigate this plan to get to more meatier substantive issues during interviews. We sought to refine and revise our mission, vision, and value statements, and also define a journey of a warrior or portrait of a graduate. Quick historical sidebar, we first heard of portraits of graduates after Board Member Barb Sandy went to the National School Board Convention a while ago, maybe two years ago, when Barb first brought that back. And that has been a, the portrait of a graduate is something we've been talking about, and you'll see we've put our own Salamanca spin as journey of a warrior, and we'll talk about what each student should possess in skills and mindsets as they leave Prospect, as they leave Seneca, and as they graduate from the high school. We also sought to actively engage through graphics and visual representations, the mood and the spirit of our mission, vision, and the values, as well as our portrait of a graduate. You will hear those four themes as four pillars and benchmarks, and the real foundation of our plan, mission, vision, values, and grad, portrait of a graduate or portrait of a journey of a warrior. And as always with the plan, a primary function is to communicate effectively with the rollout of the mission, vision, values, and portrait of a graduate. Our process was extensive, detailed, and thorough and comprehensive. We partnered with Education Elements, a national organization that specializes in governance structures and plans, particularly strategic planning, professional development. They helped us understand our clear roles, always keep in mind a diverse voice, deep collaboration amongst the team members, but also beyond the team, and I'll show that in just a few seconds, and strong project management. What strong project management could easily be translated to is taskmasters. We met often, we met frequently, as needed. They cracked the whip, we cracked the whip with ourselves. We kept this moving along. And when you see the timeline, you'll notice an interruption that caught us, caught everyone in the country off guard in early March, when we were just getting rolling. But to the credit of our project partners and the team members, we kept moving along at a very determined clip. We set aggressive deadlines, and so far we've met all of those deadlines. Our project team and the governance partners with Education Elements was Alay Belan. He was our point person in Salamanca. He was our go-to person for us in the district. We went to LA for a number of things. He facilitated our trainings and our sessions. He reported to Dana Britt, who was the project sponsor. She was the leadership of Education Elements that kept Education Elements meeting their benchmarks to help us meet our benchmarks. And really something interesting, our visual designer, Kuei Li, and you'll see that we've tried to present our strategic plan not just in text, but your first impression, we hope, are the visual representations which capture the mood and the spirit of what we're trying to convey. Our district project team included the project sponsor, myself is the point person. Our project team included three other district leaders, Karen McGarrah, Mark Bieler, Penny Beatty. This project team of Mark, Karen, Penny, and myself really helped to facilitate and participate in the strategic concept design to bring in our steering committee, which included 15 district representatives. These are the representatives, Penny Beatty, Mark Bieler, myself, Karen McGarrah, Michelle Red Eye, Gail Pavone, Chris Seibert, Kristy Osgood, Travis Happold, Marcy Brown, Kelly Calarko, Sue Schnauffer, Carrie John, Meg McCune, Dennis Cogly, student, John Sheehan from the Chamber, Tracy Pessini, and Nancy Williamson, the Seneca Nation Education Department, Aralene Bové as a council representative, and Sandy Brundage from the Recreation Commission. These were the members of our steering team that met extensively over the past approximately nine months. We had seven educational workshops over the period of December after our strategic planning launch at the casino in November. So in December and February, we met twice to plan and align. We began our foundation work in March, then COVID hit, and this caused us a little interruption, but with the partnership with Education Elements, we were able to overcome that. And then we continued to meet virtually and digitally, the first time Education Elements has done strategic planning on a completely remote platform. And I think that, all things considered, it worked quite well. And then we had six design and launch meetings over April and May with our steering team. Those were half-day and full-day meetings. I think I can safely speak for the steering committee meetings, that those meetings were academically and intellectually rigorous, but incredibly fun. Where we started in our strategic planning process, up on the screen now is our current, or up till today, our current mission statement, which reads a lot like other mission statements. "The mission of the Salamanca City School District is to ensure a learning environment and growth for all. We pledge to provide a safe environment where all students will be prepared for life's challenges and grow into responsible citizens." It follows that typical strategic planning cadence. We will do this, and we will do this, and we will do this, but it somewhat lacks action items. We also, in our current mindset, we identified core values, that it's essential for students to have unique talents and needs and cultural diversity, kind of lumps those things together. "All students will deserve to have an equal access and challenging opportunities, and schools will be safe." This is a standard operating procedure, mission and value set of statements and core beliefs. It's pretty dated, and it doesn't reflect the current student population or current needs of school district. COVID aside, we felt as though our mission statement and our value statements needed some attention. So as we began this process, we started not first with, oh, what do we want to do? What do we want our mission statements and values to be? We wanted, how are we going to engage? How are we going to get this information? I've been part of other strategic plans, and we always start with, let's talk about our mission, let's talk about our value, and then it just kind of, it isn't very enjoyable. But what we did by starting with engaging of the community and the engagement process, we started to focus in on what's our purpose, and what aspirations do we have for children, what skills and mindsets and core knowledge beliefs do we think are essential for students to possess upon graduating? Because ultimately, that's our job, to prepare students for life to graduate. And if we don't understand what our purpose is and what aspirations we have, it's kind of hard to get that product. And finally, with regard to the engagement, what hopes do we have for students in our district and our community? This is an aspirational objective and goal so that we can be focused not on what we were, there's a part of that in this plan, not where we are today, but what do we want to be in the next period of four, or five, or 10 years? So as that engagement process started, one of the first activities we did is we identified what matters to us as a district. And if you look at this visual graphical representation in this activity, we all got a card, and we had to articulate what that card means to us. Kind of like the empathy interviews, everything we do should elicit an emotional visceral reaction as to why it's critical and why it's important. And some of the elements that came crystal clear through this process is, we need to make sure our kids have life skills. We need to make sure that our schools provide lifetime learning opportunities for our students, that we don't change our stripes, a very subtle nod to our past, which helps us understand our present, engage our future. We need to keep our eyes on goals. We need to focus a vision for life, not be afraid to get outside the box, and to make sure that we open doors for students. So this graphical representation was one of the first things we did. And having been in a number of training sessions, my apprehension at this first thing was, whoa, this is a pretty aggressive jump into strategic planning. We were thinking a post-it note, tell us what we like, and they at Education Elements got us to work and set the whole tempo for the whole six, nine months of interactions from December to this point. Now, as we looked forward, that got us into the approach of, now that we have an understanding of the engagement hierarchy and the engagement process, we need to go out into our community. And we spent a significant amount of time trying to understand and being willing and ready to hear brutal, honest appraisals from our community. We talked with teachers and students, family members, alumni, members of the Seneca Nation, and honestly, just strangers that happened to be in the community. We wanted the cold, hard facts. We wanted an honest appraisal, no matter what it was. Because if we didn't reflect and recognize that we don't have all of the answers and that there is an engagement layer that we don't always get at a school level, we have to be willing to accept that factual information from our community. It was critical that our role in this engagement with our community made sure that we went out to hear from voices that we wouldn't normally hear from. All too often, we go to people we know are going to tell us what we want to hear, and with the partnership with Ed Elements and our surveys and our empathy interviews, we heard extensively the good, the bad, the promising, and the concerning. So the diversity of voice and the representatives that came to us, they came out of the woodwork to participate with us. In retrospect, that, I think, laid the ground level and the foundation for the response that we got to the COVID surveys from our community to this point in time. And I think that, just kind of as a side note, if you engage your community and you are willing to listen to them and actively ask them your opinion, the first time it may seem hard, the second time, hey, it's not so bad, the third and the fourth and the fifth time, we are going to have people coming to us, as we have during this crisis, with good ideas that make sense. That's what the engagement process and the relationship with our community has evolved into. We also needed to train our investigators and our researchers on how to do that, our team members. We needed to listen and empathize with them, not judge or try to wordsmith or jargonize the comments that came to us, but simply listen and try to understand not just what they're saying, but how they're saying it. And then we needed to work with our designers and creators to put that into a format that we could actively use and engage for the next step. So we had 330, or I'm sorry, 322 surveys were responded. Those are 322 individual and unique surveys that we sent out to our community, students, teachers, faculty, staff, and community members. And some data that we found that's not so surprising, 75% of those who responded felt that our teaching staff was doing a very good job of meeting our students' needs and providing professional strength, as well as areas for growth. 73% felt that we were educating all students and that the faculty perceptions recognized and identified their confidence in meeting the needs of students. And again, this is during the COVID crisis. So this is an underpinning that while things changed immediately and drastically in the middle of March, our staff, all staff, was still meeting the needs of students. An area that looks a little lower, student and staff family relationships. What we understood from this is, while this isn't as high as the first two, the overall perception is that we are doing a better job of engaging and promoting family and staff relationships. So this is a point of growth. And again, we have to be willing to accept that not all the news is great. We have ground to make up here, and we have growth opportunities with continuing to engage our families. 76% found that we had done a favorable job of reducing barriers to education. We've sat at this board table a number of times and say, well, people don't, aren't involved. We have 46 individuals on this board meeting. That's pretty good. So the reduction of barriers, plus 60 on Facebook. So creating opportunities where barriers to engage our community are reduced gets us a better relationship and better feedback for our planning processes. We held 28 different focus groups, where the focus groups were between four and 10 individuals per focus group. We heard from students who said, you teach us how to be leaders. And we heard from teachers who said, this is what our kids need. They don't need a camp program, per se. We need consistency. We need time to allow the relationships to build. We heard from parents who said that we're producing successful people who compete in the real world. And we also heard from members of the community that they thought that what we were doing to celebrate student graduations was great. We also heard from families that said, we need to do a better job of reaching out to people. We also heard from families and our focus groups that sometimes we forget who we are, and we need to keep that past mindset, present conditions, and future aspirations in mind. So we took all of that information, we synthesized our learning, and I think this, while it's just on a flip chart, really signifies the epiphany we had during this process. And that yesterday, we felt we had community members feel that Salamanca Central School District is improving. That's a good thing. Tomorrow, the district and community will reap the benefits of continued collaboration with students so they're well-prepared for their future. And if we want our district and community to be successful, flourishing, collaborative teams, then we must involve value and effectively communicate with all stakeholders. Not rocket science, folks, but good, good advice. We took this, we summarized our current state, we identified our collective aspirations, and then we created theories of action. Now, that's a lot of work in about nine months. What our first deliverable is, is a brochure that identifies those aspirations, our value, our missions, our belief statements, and the journey of our warriors at Prospect, at Seneca, and the high school. Okay. I may need help getting this up here, so just give me one second. So this is our brochure. Coming up, anticlimactic. Okay, so we'll stop that chair for a second and bring up the PDF. Yes, slide 17. There we go. And then, shh, there we go. I don't have it on my screen, Rob. It's not shared. I can't see that, that's far away. Thank you. Okay. Okay, perfect. All right, so, Rob, we just want to expand it. All right, that's good. Okay, so, thank you. Sorry for that brief technological delay. So one of the first things that you'll look at is when the brochure comes out, it is going to be printed and formatted in an accordion format. So much like a AAA roadmap, you'll have the whole thing in front of you so that it's all one page, so you can see the whole panoramic view of everything. Okay. So looking at our first slide here, as we come into here, okay, guys, this mouse isn't working. So Rob, do you want to just stay up there and pull the slides down? So go to the next slide. Nope, the terrific kid. Whole thing. I feel like I'm on a Seinfeld episode. So when you look and open this up, the first thing you're going to see, we hope that your first two things you see is you're drawn to a piece of incredible artwork from a graduate of the class of 2020, Kahala George. And that has both indigenous, historical, artistic attributes within this design. And not only is that important as a part of what we do as a district, it's also a subtle nod and reflection to our culture and our history within this community. And if you immediately look at that and see the beauty of a student piece of artwork, you're going to immediately pan down and see one of our Prospect kids as a terrific kid, in partnership with the Kiwanis Club. So we want the first thing for you to see is art and beauty and the talents of our students, and then see our students being successful. Then go to the text. Hopefully, someone, you'll read the introduction that talks about why this is important for us. But like I said earlier, you eat first with your eyes. We want you to digest our plan with your eyes first so that elicits a reaction to give you a perspective of what we value in the district. Okay, Rob, you want to go to the next one? Okay. So the next slide really gives an overview. It's text-heavy, but it's important for people to understand that our journey of a warrior represents the skills and mindsets. Keep those two words in your cognitive thought process. Skills and mindsets as students move through our system. We talked about our team, we list our district website so people can get more information immediately in the beginning of the document, and then we outlined our nine-month process from December. Next slide, Rob. So our third slide, fourth slide, excuse me, gives you a quick synopsis of our Board of Education, which is our governance team, and our district investment in our school district finances, and it gives a nod to our partners. But what you see here first is you see in the upper left-hand corner, a student with an author visit, having an absolute blast. And then you see in the bottom corner, one of our swimmers, not just floating or treading water, but moving through the water. And the subtlety of both of these, we hope, allows you to see that our students are in school, learning, competing, having fun, and being great ambassadors of our system. Okay, Rob. This is something that we think is really important in our process. One panel in our strategic plan that gives you all the nuts and bolts. As of June 1st, 1388 student population, 800 students free and reduced lunch, 150 students with individual, unique learning programs, 75 students in career technical education, 190 teaching and support staff, 76 support staff members, eight administrators, three schools, one nation. And we think, as all of those building blocks come together, and the importance of the one warrior nation signifies where we are and where we've evolved as a district from, say, 10 or 15 years ago. The other elements to this slide, which I think highlight the success and the hard work of the community and the district, is our graduation success rates. Since 2013, 35% of our students There's been a 35% increase of our overall graduation rate and a 47% increase in our graduation rates for Native American students. Anyone that's looking at Salamanca is going to see this, and they should know, we've got a good student population, we're a high-poverty district with a lot of kids that depend upon us for free and reduced lunch, we've got active specialized programs, we've got a footprint in career technical education, we've got a good staff, strong staffing numbers, strong support numbers, but we all converge into one common warrior nation. Next slide, Rob. So this is really setting the stage. Unlike previous vision, mission, you get those statements first and then a lot of text. Our mission, excuse me, our vision is to raise, is raising resilient warrior I'll fire them. Yep. Our vision statement is raising resilient and compassionate warriors. That's what we want every student to achieve. Our mission is to maximize the potential of every warrior by fostering strong relationships, embracing diversity, and providing opportunities for both exploration and inquiry. What we value, what we do every day is collaborate and communicate, where we seek clear and consistent communications with our community and to be able to respond to your concerns. We seek educational opportunities. We value the extensive, incredible variety of experiences that we can provide our community. We seek to be community-driven so that we develop those positive relationships through respectful, compassionate interactions within each classroom, but also throughout our community, and we celebrate our culture. We value deeply the diversity and the qualities that bring us together. And this gets us to the journey of our warrior, a portrait of our graduate. And I want to take just a second or two here to explain this graphical representation. It is fundamentally rooted in six attributes and mindsets. Respect, literacy, life skills, responsibility, interpersonal skills, and critical thinking. And if you look at each of these icons, the heart, the book, tools, a tree, teamwork, and problem-solving, critical thinking skills, the puzzle of the pieces coming together as we understand things, these themes at each school, as each program, Prospect, Seneca, and the high school, grow and evolve their skill sets, you'll see these icons, at first at Prospect, a little faint, a little subtle, a little subdued, but as they move through our program, just like our students grow and learn and become more mature and more responsible and independent with their own learning, you'll see these icons grow in both vibrancy and skill sets. Starting at Prospect, little bit more down lower. Okay, so on the bottom of this screen, you'll see the demographics for Prospect, kind of the name, rank, serial number. So somebody sees it, they know who the principal is, they know where it's located, they know the phone number, they know the hours of operation, they have a contact with the principal, and they also have some values. And if you take a second and look at the, the pictures that we have here, one of the themes that came incredibly glaring through from the surveys and the responses from our community, that Prospect is steeped in literacy and literature and reading as the foundation moving forward for our growth of our students pre-K3. Rob, if you can go just up a little to the top of that page. So you'll see the icons for respect, literacy, life skills, and so forth, and you see they're starting to emerge. And we spent time articulating what a Prospect student could do and should do in terms of respect. Understanding and practice mutual respect, remain calm when experiencing difficulties, and be confident enough to ask for help. You'll see through each of these six mindsets with Prospect students, it's about identifying what their needs are and being able to seek additional help. We know with Prospect-age students that they're very dependent upon adults for a great deal, but we want them to grow in their skills so they can become more independent. And what I think is important, and I'm going to highlight literacy throughout the three because I think it's important, but it's also gives you a flavor, I won't go through all six of them, but by focusing on literacy at Prospect, Seneca, and the high school, you'll see how this develops and grows. At Prospect, as a journey of a warrior, when they leave in third grade, we want them to enjoy reading and learn how to use strategies to better understand text and explore different genres. You can go to the next slide, Rob. And at the bottom, you'll see the demographics also for Seneca, kind of the name, rank, serial number type things, is where they can get that. But focusing on the literacy and the icons, you'll notice the icons are, are starting to be a little bit more developed. Just up a little bit more, Rob, so we can see the, you'll see the heart start to emerge for respect, you'll see the book start to take a little bit more shape, a more definitive structure for the, the icon for life skills and, and the tree of responsibility is growing, getting a little bit more stronger and so forth. But in literacy, as students exit Seneca, we want them to shift from learning to read to reading to learn, and to demonstrate the ability to incorporate literary skills to communicate more effectively. And as you look at respect from all three schools and critical thinking for all three schools, you'll see an emergence of growth and independence in each of those areas. Okay, Rob. And finally, at the high school, you'll see the icons are fully developed but not completely integrated as they are in the, in the cover sheet where it's fully integrated with all six on that one slide pamphlet, panel. In literacy at the high school, learn, excuse me, read to learn and read for enjoyment, and use text to make inferences and draw conclusions and analysis, and synthesize and evaluate ideas. And I do want to highlight at the high school level, the level of responsibility. We know when we hear often about students that struggle, but where our students are at Prospect, Seneca, and certainly at the high school over the last half dozen or so years, our students are able to exercise thoughtful decision-making, they prioritize and self-reflect on their own outcomes, whether they're positive or negative. And I know that Mr. Seibert and the staff at the high school, I think that they would affirm that the students we have today are more responsible, they're more committed to their peers and students, they're conscientiously aware that they impact the Salamanca world and the Salamanca community themselves. And as we blend all three of these together with our critical mindset and skill sets of our six attributes, we build a journey of a warrior from pre-K age four, so in some cases, three, when they start in September, to age 21. This is not a sprint, it is a marathon of importance, perhaps the most sacred level of importance of getting students to be prepared, to be independent, students and adults able to operate and effectively succeed in our environments, whether it's business, university, trade schools, armed services, self-employment, or exploration, we want our students to have the skill sets to respond to anything that life throws at them. And like the Prospect students, who may not always fully understand what happens, have the confidence to seek and ask help when necessary. And Rob, if you want to advance one more slide? We bring it almost to a close, not quite, but a focus on the diversity and the opportunities that our students have for academics and extracurricular. We could have highlighted dozens of things, but we tried to cluster this panel on our priorities in an academic and an instructional world. Literacy, of course, is part of our plan. STEAM technology is what we've become synonymous with. Our fine arts and our music programs, our exemplary, our native students and our supports, as well as our other community offerings, including community ed, instructional settings, and of course, athletics, rounds out our student body and our community and our school district to operate at any level in active competition with any other school district in Western New York or New York State or the country. Rob, do you want to go down to the last slide, I believe? And we end with six shots that we think signify our commitment to those mindsets and skills. Fine arts and music, cultural identity, athletics, literacy, reading, science, exploration, transformation, and of course, STEAM. And Rob, we can go back to the PowerPoint. Okay, there we go. So what happens next? I got it. Share screen. Okay. Share screen, and it's S, yep. Perfect. And then, share. So what happens next with our plan? We continue to focus our strategic direction on teaching and learning. We engage professional development to share the plan and to continue that growth for our students, our staff, our faculty, and during COVID, of course, our parents, and for those working and operating in a remote structure. We continue to reach out to our community to ask the critical questions, not just, how's it going, but how are we doing? How can we do better? How can we reach more people in our community? And of course, always focus in on our operations. And while school is transforming for where the classrooms may be, we still have an obligation and a responsibility to make sure that our schools are prepared for learning in whatever format it may take. The last part is what happens next in year two of our plan. Our project team continues to meet monthly. Our steering committee has not been disbanded. And hopefully, they'll still continue to join us on these bimonthly adventures and conversations about what happens next with our mission, vision, values, and journey of a warrior. We'll expand this group to working groups. We've talked extensively about our need for a facilities group, aligning our district initiatives, and making sure that we can promote personalized learning plans, which I think is critically important under a COVID umbrella, and then continue to facilitate our board retreats. I want to take just five seconds and talk about the board engagement piece. It's critical that the board continues to operate in a facilitated retreat mindset so that the board isn't chasing initiatives, but laying the foundation for future initiatives. We want the board to be in a future-oriented mindset about what happens next in the district. We'll still manage the day-to-day operations, of course, that's part of our obligation. But we have to depend upon our community to keep us informed on how is it going? How are we doing and what do we need, as well as our staff. And if I just point back to 322 unique responses and 28 focus groups, we have a foundation where people are comfortable telling us what we need to hear, and we've embraced that. So that has to continue at board engagement level and facilitated retreats with not just the board, but other community groups. And as that happens, we'll be sending with the board's approval and endorsement this brochure for printing and getting the accordion pamphlet out for mass distribution to our community. Now, that's a lot. That's a 35,000-foot view of something that took almost a year to develop with dozens of individuals. And Mark, Karen, and Penny, I know, are on the call. Before I turn it over for feedback and questions, I'll invite the steering, the district team to weigh in if there's anything else that I missed or need to elaborate on.
Thank you for that opportunity. I'm pretty sure you didn't miss anything or want to elaborate on anything. You did a great job there. I know you're very passionate about this, yeah, as all of us are. I just wanted to share that it was a great experience. One thing that was consistent at all of the meetings is that, you know, we almost ended earlier than anticipated by the facilitators. And we realized that that was a good thing because, for the most part, all of the members that were there and all of the stakeholders, which included community members and folks who typically aren't really involved with the school district, were really all on the same page with what the expectations were. There weren't many dissensions. There was good conversation as we moved forward. But it was really nice to see that in a collaborative environment like this, that there was so much consistent feedback and consistent expectations for our students.
Penny, anything you guys might want to add to the conversation? Penny, go ahead and unmute yourself.
I, this, what Bob and Mark said is true. This was, it was a great experience, and we appreciated all the input we got from the school, the community, and especially when we did the focus group interviews, getting to interview alumni and students and community members, sitting at Tim Hortons and interviewing people that are in their 70s and what their concept, what they thought our school was and how it is. And it was very eye-opening, and the whole process was great. And you did a nice job. Thank you.
Thanks, Penny.
Um, okay, there I am.
All right, this is Kristy Osgood, one of our committee members.
I just want to say that I felt that it was amazing to work with everybody. You know, as, you know, as an employee, you know, working with your administrator, you would think that's a little intimidating, but it's not. We actually had a blast with the administration. And I just want to thank them to make it, you know, they were, it was very comfortable, you know, letting you know how we feel and talk about it and whatnot. So this whole experience for me, I'm very, very appreciative for being part of it. And I'm excited. I'm probably just as excited as Mr. B., so. I was, I even had, I had my fiancee here watching it, and he goes, "Oh, my God." So I'm like, "This is important to me." So yeah, I'm pretty excited, so.
I've never been compared to Beyonce, so thank you for that, I think.
No, my fiancee was watching it.
Oh, fiancee, oh.
Yeah, not fiancee, my husband-to-be. I was having him watch it and look through it.
Can we edit that out? I'm sure that's going to be on a blooper reel. Thank you. Karen, anything to add?
Yeah, I think I'm just excited that we got through it. I was ecstatic when you said we were going to finally do a strategic plan. So I am extremely looking forward to the next steps in the process and to reviewing, go on an annual basis or quarterly basis as to where we are and where we still need to go.
Great. Mrs. Ray.
Oh, my only, Karen kind of led into one of the questions I had, and that was, do we update it annually for like all of our stats? And is it just a working copy every year that we put out? I was kind of curious on that.
Yeah, one of the last slides we talked about was what's next. So the steering committee is gonna, the district leadership team is going to continue to meet monthly. And then the steering committees will meet bimonthly. And then we will have additional focus groups that will come in. And depending upon the project work that they're doing, they may meet monthly. They may meet multiple times during a month based on the work that they're doing, like facilities or the initiative alignment, whether it's STEAM or literacy or career tech ed or any of a number of things that are still going to come out. We're still under contract with Education Elements, and they are actively working on the next set. We literally finished this, I think, Friday evening. So, and we set a presentation date of August 4th. And so we were at some point in time, we weren't sure we were going to get there. Mark is, we did finish earlier, but it took several weeks for us to settle on the graphics. And the picture on the opening slide with the young boy with the Kiwanis Terrific Kid Award, there were so many pictures for us to choose from. We really, we could have spent days selecting the other graphics. But the next step is to take a moment, catch your breath, get this to print, get it distributed, and then start year two. This is a five-year process, and the demographics and the data points will be updated. And we may look at additions to the brochure. But this is really going to be our template to give to everyone new registrants, hand out at teacher recruitment fairs. This is glossy and shiny, and it's really, really representative of our community. And I did just have an opportunity to share it with a colleague yesterday, and they were furious that we had something so nice. They were jealous, and we don't do this to be jealous. We don't do this to do anything other than present ourselves in the best possible light. But this is really, I think, one of the, one of the best things that we've done in a while that we can be proud of. The process, the product, and the fact that we're excited about this is a stark difference from the last strategic plan.
It's really great. Congratulations to everybody that took part and worked on it and for giving your time. Does any other board members have any questions? Okay, yes. All right, then with that, do we have anyone from Title VI? Or any public communications? Did you say she does have something? She's not on? Okay, all right, so we're good. Just wanted to make sure. And we can go to central office message. Mark, you want to start us off?
Sure, I'll just make it quick. I wanted to express my gratitude for all of those individuals who are working this summer. And that would include our custodial staff, our buildings and ground staff, everyone who is connected with facilities. You know, this evening, as I walked to the meeting here, I saw one of our cleaners literally on the floor scraping the area where the tiles meet the floor to ensure that the building is clean. The buildings and ground look absolutely terrific. There's an incredible amount of work that needs to get done at Prospect, and they're headed over there. So, you know, those are things that happen during the day and in the evening that sometimes over get looked, but they're critical to ensuring that our buildings look great and moving forward that they're safe for our return of our staff as well as our students. I also just wanted to acknowledge our IT department. A lot has happened this summer with security, with cameras, with door swipes, enabling us to move forward with our e-learning initiatives. And that has been challenging, given the scarcity of some of the resources. So again, the IT department, specifically Rob Miller and his guys, and Dan Lern and the Buildings and Grounds Facilities and our custodians and cleaners have just been doing a terrific job. So thank you.
Karen?
Yeah, I totally second that with Mark and facilities and technology. And we have to add in transportation as well. They're all doing a bang-up job for us. And a lot of times, they seem to be overlooked. But they're extremely important to the success of our district. And as Mark said, the buildings look great, and the buses, of course, always look good. And they're getting them extra cleaned for the potential runs that we'll have and so forth. I'd also like to let everyone know that I had applied for the CEP program again, which allows us to have free breakfast and lunch for all of our students. And I got notification yesterday that that application was approved, so we're good for another four years, which is great news for our community. That's all I have.
Karen, that's exciting. Okay, we'll move on to our board message. Barb?
Thank you, Karen, for getting the food. Nutrition is especially important during COVID when some kids are not getting enough to eat. And I also want to thank everybody who works so hard on the Strategic Planning Committee. It was a lot different from when I was here. And I like the tweak to "journey of a warrior" that will make a strong connection with the kids in the district, keeping in mind that it is the portrait of a graduate. Thank you.
I would like to commend the staff, the summer staff. It's been, I'm sure, very hard for them with this COVID scare everywhere. And I have to come into the school not knowing what's going on, or I commend them. And our teachers that will be coming back in the fall. I know there's a lot of different programs for the children, the students, as far as being here or not being here. But I give the teachers a lot of credit and hope all goes well.
Neil?
I'd also like to echo, you know, that the summer staff has done a great job on the building. And it's really been, you know, difficult, you know, with the COVID going on to have a lot of people in at once, you know, to clean. And also thank Rob. Also, one of our summer school students broke his device, and there was a new one there the next day. So thank you very much. That's all I have.
Ed?
Great job by the Strategic Planning Committee. There's a lot of great information in there, and I think this community is going to benefit from that. So, great job.
Yeah, I wanted to, again, thank all of our staff, the entire Salamanca team. Things haven't been easy the past few months, and there's, you know, a lot of work that's been done over the past couple of weeks to months in preparation for the upcoming school year. I'm, I just can't wait to hear what the governor has to say. Busting with anticipation. But I know we're gonna, you know, we're gonna do the best we can, and we're gonna prepare as best we can. I have to reiterate another message, you know, to the parents, teachers at home. You know, work with your kids. You've got another month before we have some type of school learning again, you know? Get your kids to read a book, get on an educational program, work with them, anything, even if it's simple math programs or something. It's been so long since we've had the formal classroom education. I just, I have to keep bringing this up. It's just so important. We have no idea how much the kids have regressed, how much they've lost. So anything you could do to help them at home, take that five, 10, 20 minutes, whatever it is. If you have an opportunity to do even more, great. But yeah, I want to commend everybody for, you know, the trials and tribulations over the past few months, and I'm looking forward to what we have in the next month. Also, I do want to say that I'm pretty excited about the progress over at Vets Park. I'm not sure who's giving us the great drone footage, whether that's Levi. Oh, it is Levi, right. But I love seeing those posts on Facebook. I love seeing the progress. Can't wait to get over there and actually run around on the field. I think we're gonna have to schedule some sort of pickup game of some type over there just to break it in.
I'm out on the field, something's gonna need to get picked up, I'm pretty sure. My cadaver.
But it's exciting. You know, a lot of people I've talked to in the community are so excited about what we're doing, the opportunities, you know, the money we're investing in this district and our community. It's impressive and it's exciting to everybody who's had a part in making this a reality. You know, congratulations, and I thank you for the effort. I guess that's enough.
If you come over to my house, you can jump over the fence and get a firsthand look at all the progress. You're free of charge anytime. You can, you can see it. Yeah, it's about four foot right now, so you can make it, I'm sure. I also want to say thank you to everybody that's worked so hard this summer, that continues to work, that's trying to prepare us for the unknown because we think we have a good plan in place, and we do. But we never know what's going to get thrown at us. And I'd just like to encourage all the parents out there that are concerned. If you have questions, you know, again, we talked in the brochure about keeping those lines of communication open. Don't be afraid to get on the website and leave a comment. If you're not sure and you have a question, you know, make sure you ask it because we want to make sure that you get the correct information and that you are not anxious either. I've talked to a lot of parents, and I know that they're anxious about how they can support their kids and, you know, the kids going back to school and what that's going to look like. And if they keep them home, you know, are they going to be able to help them enough to make sure that they're doing their work? So there's a lot of anxiety out there. And I know as a district, we want to make sure that we can help everybody the best way that we can. So again, if you have questions or comments, don't be afraid to call or write or email any of the board members, any of the administrators, anybody if you know them so that we can help get your questions answered and that you're not anxious during this time. And again, thank you to everybody that's put in all that hard work developing our plans, that's developed our strategic plan especially because it's a lot of work. And if anybody's ever gone through that process, they'll understand it. So we're doing great things again, but let's keep it going. And thank you to everybody that's helped, and that's everyone. Teachers, support staff, cleaners, bus drivers, IT, everyone, because we are... Because we are all essential in helping make the school, making the school district successful, so. And I'll turn it over to Bob because I know he's excited tonight.
I know. I'm like, I'm all wound up. Haven't had coffee since eight this morning. So, just a couple of quick things. We do have a Personnel Committee meeting Thursday morning. We'll be talking about some of the unfilled positions that are still working through the hiring process. We will also be talking about some policy adjustments with regard to memorials, dedications and naming of facilities or venues within the district now that things are growing and being renovated. The, the process and the policy is still a work in progress, so we're gonna have that conversation. We also will be talking about just kind of an overview of the changes with the Child Victims Act that has been extended to August of 2021. That's pretty much the agenda item, so spoiler alert. We also had a walkthrough for a punch list at Prospect this morning. We did the library and thank you Levi and company for the pictures of the Prospect Library. The pictures are beautiful, but honestly, the pictures don't do it justice once you get that natural light in there. And if you remember from the Prospect Library previously, it was like a cave, literally no light, which is not conducive to a literary center of excellence in an elementary school. We also did the computer lab as well. Nothing significant. There's some paint touch-ups and some molding touch-ups and some woodwork issues. But the library looks really good and we hope to get the painters should be on site today and tomorrow. And we think we'll be able to get that turned over to Gail and the librarian by early part of next week so they can start stocking shelves. The computer lab may take a little bit more timing to get the furniture and fixed assets in there to get the computer lab set up. Rich Pankowski and the Buildings and Grounds Crew, I can't thank them enough. And they've got this campus looking great. And the second we can get them over to Prospect, they're gonna invade Prospect like storming the beaches of Normandy to get that cleaned up and ready for teachers. As soon as we can get the space, they've got a plan. They're gonna tackle it wing by wing. And we'll, we will meet the deadline of being ready for everybody. I do want to just quickly respond to the governor's comment about school districts now being in the business of medically testing students for the COVID virus. Aside from the flip kind of cavalier approach to that, that of course, we're going to do that. It has created a regional and a statewide concern that we are not a medical testing entity. We never have been. We can do educational testing. So, there is great concern about how we can move in that fashion. That said, we've talked previously, I think about a week or so ago, of exploring partnerships with other entities, tele mobile medicine, our school physician, the county, et cetera, to see if we can get movement on that. And so, we will be coming forward soon with some solutions if that is in fact the direction. I would just caution everyone that a comment at a press conference isn't state policy. Even if it is a directive by executive order, there is still a process that we will need to undertake to make certain that we can do it safely. This is medical testing. This is not our domain. This is not our business. But if that is the task, then we will engage at whatever level to make sure we meet the requirements, do it safely, and do it in a way that provides us with these types of services that we have become known for in this region. The last thing that I will say is, while we have discussed this previously, I'm going to officially announce today that the welcome back picnics are postponed and that we will have the welcome back picnics in some way, shape or form on a later date when it's safe. But rather than kind of wait and see, I think we're gonna put a pin in that and say we can't do it at this point in time safely under the current restrictions. We're not canceling. We're just gonna move them to a later date. So, stay tuned for more details and we'll be getting that information out confirming to the community. But I think we waited long enough to officially pull the plug to do it safely. And that's all I have.
Now, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Sue, second by Barb. Are there any questions on the consent agenda?
One.
Okay.
Well, with Sue Hannon. So, is she just gonna be in a holding pattern kind of thing?
Yes. We're optimistic somewhat that we will have sports and athletics this year. We just don't know what the calendar is gonna look like. So, we don't want to lose Sue. She's been exemplary as an athletic trainer and they're hard to come by.
Yeah, we found that out before. Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, you know what? I had another one. I guess it kind of ties into the slide we saw earlier too. Karen, this is more for you. In the cafeteria profit and loss, we show a profit. But in the slide, I just remember that Bob had that slide, 1,300 and some students and 800 are eligible for free and reduced lunch. Can you kind of go over this whole scenario because we show a profit in our cafeteria for the food service, but we're only showing 800 eligible, but we all know we have free and reduced.
Yeah, that's, it's like a Common Core math from New York State. For the program, you need to have 40% of your kids eligible as free and reduced as far as a direct certification, which means they're a TANF, a SNAP or a Medicaid family. And then anyone else that lives in that household is also eligible. So, it works out between all the direct certs and the extension. We have about 65, I think it's 65.1% of each one of our buildings are eligible for free foods. And because that's greater than the 40%, they weigh it. And it works out that we have enough that we receive 100% of our reimbursement based on the free rates, which is the highest rate of reimbursement that you can get. But that's how we continue to essentially make money in our cafeteria. We were able to purchase the equipment in both the multipurpose room that you're right next to and the kitchen cafeteria at Prospect with the proceeds that we've had from the cafeteria fund over the last five or six years. Make sense? Any other questions?
I don't think so. All right, any other questions, Carrie? Just, just.
On this topic.
Just double checking. Okay. Then we got a motion by Sue, second by Barb. All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. And our old business, our indigenous policies and procedures, we need a motion to approve the indigenous policies and procedures. Motion by Brad, second by Dale. Are there any questions?
Not a question, more of a comment.
Okay.
I just want to draw, if there's any parents in the audience or even just our staff, your attention to just procedure number five. When, and it's always been common knowledge that if you want to request for any new programs or anything, put it in writing and the district will respond. That's still part of the procedure. If you put in a legitimate written request, then in item number 5.2, the district has 30 days to respond. Bob, can you kind of just go over how many written requests we've actually had in the past few years and what we've done with them?
There have been probably about five total written requests that we've received as a result of our IPP conversations. One was about girls lacrosse, and that came as a result of a meeting in minutes from a meeting a while back with state education, the state education department, who questioned us why we have boys lacrosse and didn't have girls lacrosse. And that led to us creating a girls lacrosse program. There was a conversation and written request from the Education Director at the nation a few years ago about us providing private transportation to students that were enrolled in non-public schools in Ole Miss. We responded that we were not in a position to do that because those schools exceeded the 15-mile radius, which most school districts are under the requirement to provide. But as a small city school district, that rule does not apply to us, and we denied that request. There were two within the last year about food service or food options. We did respond to that parent. That also came as a result of Title VI, I believe, conversations. And we did eventually link that person up with Chef Drew, and they did expand some menu options that were a little bit more indigenous focused food items. And there was one other one. And I'm drawing a blank as to what that is. I'd have to do a little bit more research on that. But I think there's been five formal written requests, but there are a number of, what's that? Yes, yes, thank you. And we created a National Junior Honor Society. There were a number of other informal requests that come as a result of a formal meeting that we have in the district. So, if someone were to address this forum or the Indigenous Education Committee meeting or Finance Committee or things like that, then if it's formally requested at an open meeting that we have, then that could possibly trigger. That really hasn't happened other than the Indigenous Said Committee meeting that I'm aware of.
Attend, and it'd be nice to see some new faces at these meetings. I believe we have a meeting next Wednesday on the 12th. And all the information, it's available on our website, right?
Website. And this new IPP will be posted within the next day or so and then sent to the nation within, I think, five days.
Carrie, so we have a motion by Brad, second by Dale. All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. Under new business, we have our food service management contract extension for personal touch. So, we need a motion to approve the food service contract extension. Motion by Dale, second by Brad. Are there any questions on this contract?
I guess, Karen, can you kind of just go over this a little bit? We already touched on how we get our free and reduced, but can you go over this?
Yeah, it's, it's another extension. It's our third year extension with personal touch. And the increase in cost is based on the CPI from May of 20 back to May of 19, the difference. And actually have a meeting with them on Thursday to go over the new cafeteria at Prospect and to see what we are gonna do with that and then to try and figure out how we can best service our kids with the whole COVID situation. You know, are we gonna, how many kids are we gonna have in district? How many are we gonna have at home? And how can we best service them through this whole situation until we get back to whatever normal is?
One last question. Are we ever gonna bring back the old peanut butter treats?
Oh, my gosh.
Levi said he has the recipe.
Levi can make them anytime.
It did several claps on the screen, so that must be something we need to pursue.
Not exactly nutritious, shall we say?
The ice cream we offer, but this could be one of those fancy extras.
It could be.
Right, Levi?
Yeah. Oh, boy. Okay, so we have a motion by Dale and seconded by Brad to approve the food service contract extension for personal touch. All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. And the next item is the creation of positions. So, we have one full-time homeschool coordinator, one full-time clerk of the works. Am I missing anything, Bob? Oh, eight part-time security personnel and three full-time cleaners?
Yes.
Okay, so we need a motion to create all those positions. Motion by Sue, second by Carrie. Are there any questions? Okay.
Are some of these positions going to be temporary positions during COVID, like the security officers? Cleaning, things like that?
At this point in time, we don't anticipate those being temporary, so to speak. So, for example, the security officers, those are eight part-time security officers. They'll be limited in a number of hours. We're looking to recruit current law enforcement or retired law enforcement individuals who would pick this up sort of as a second job. So, the reason that there's eight is to allow them flexibility. There may be a week or two when they can't work, and then the next week they might work two or four or six hours. Our long-term goal, or actually our goal for this year is for us to have a security officer, a safety officer at each one of the entrances for our buildings and then have somebody available after hours so that there's a point of contact in each one of the buildings. So, that's the security officers. That's a relatively new, well, that is entirely a new position for the district. But we have had incidents in the rise over the past several years where we've said having somebody on site other than a custodian or a cleaner or a teacher who might be here or there responsible for the facilities would be very helpful. The cleaners, with the expansion of some of the physical plant as well as a couple, just realization that we need additional individuals, that has necessitated the need for an additional three cleaners. And we anticipate that those will be permanent positions.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Now that we're approving a clerk of the works, when do we anticipate posting, interviewing, hiring and getting on board?
We're waiting for the authorization and creation of the position from civil service. Once that position is approved by the commission, then we will get out the posting ASAP. And I would expect to move on it as quickly as we can.
Also, do we know of a salary range that's associated with this?
Off the top of my head, I think we submitted it to the commission of somewhere $25 to $30 an hour.
Hang on one second, we're. I think it's a different form. I think it's in the neighborhood of $20 to $25 to $30 an hour. I'll double check that with Josie in the morning and then I can let the board members know.
Okay.
Yes.
Full-service positions, I knew when I worked for the county, they were already hired and they had to come, you know, some of them had to be one of the top three. Others, all they had to do was pass, but you could hire someone ahead of time. Can you do that?
Based on the classifications, that there will be a test for this, but I don't know if there's an active list. That's what we have to wait from the commission for. We can hire them provisionally. If there isn't a test, we've done that for countless positions. And then when they give the test, and then when they finally score the test, it could be an extensive period of time. So, we could have someone be appointed to the position, take the test and not score in the top three. That could be a problem, but it hasn't in recent memory. But it could potentially be an issue for the person. Yes. I, I would say if we find a qualified individual and there isn't a test, they need to take the test, we would hire them just like we've done in other positions. But any candidate that would be hired would.
But any candidate that would be hired would know that there would, in this case, if there is a test that's required, then they would know that going in and they would know that they would need to score in the top of the, um, scoring matrix.
Questions or comments? Then we have a motion by Sue, second by Carrie, all in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. And our personnel consent agenda that's attached for everyone's review. So we need a motion to approve the personnel consent agenda. Motion by Barb, second by Carrie, are there any questions on any of the positions? Okay, all in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. And Bob, do we have anybody here?
Yes, there, um, were three individuals on the call, um, and it looks like all three are still on the call. So the first position is the appointment of Mara Arena, who is currently a teacher assistant for us and is deeply connected with our Salamanca community. She is going to be moving into the Seneca Intermediate Library as a long-term sub. If you recall last year, when we appointed Mara as a, a sub, or I'm sorry, as a teacher assistant, the meeting was at Prospect and I indicated that Mara, you need to go back to school, you need to get your degree and Mara is doing exactly that. We had, um, interviews for the library position and as I had indicated to the board, um, I rescinded that, uh, offer of employment to that individual candidate for a variety of reasons. Uh, and we went back to our candidate pool, Mara was interested in the position. And I am thrilled, um, to present Mara Arena as a candidate for the long-term subposition in the Seneca Library. That will be for the full academic year. Mara is taking a leave of absence from her teaching assistant position. Then we will need to fill that position as well, but I'm delighted that Mara is here. So Mara, congratulations. Uh, we also have, um, Amy Barowiak, last meeting, we appointed Amy as a long-term substitute in our pre-K program at Prospect because we were waiting for Amy's, uh, certification for New York State to come through. That came through the day after the meeting, I believe. Um, so missed it by that much and, uh, we are appointing Amy, uh, as a long, and I'm sorry, we are appointing Amy as a pre-K teacher, trend your track, four-year probation period over at Prospect. So Amy, congratulations again and, uh, congratulations on getting, uh, your teacher certification in New York State. Congratulations, Amy. And the last one is, uh, Mindy John, who is being appointed as a 10th grade academic class advisor. Congratulations, Mrs. John, thank you for your service. And we appreciate, uh, all of your work and effort to partner with other colleagues to, uh, hopefully give our 10th graders, sophomores, class of 2022, 23, um, the best sophomore experience they can have. So Mrs. John, congratulations. And I believe that is it for the individuals who are, uh, appointed to positions, uh, so that's it.
Again to Mara, Amy and Mindy, and congratulations, it's really exciting. Um, we're glad that if you're a new recruit or, uh, continuing on here with this, that, uh, you just keep helping to make our district better, so thank you and congratulations. Okay, we're gonna move to item nine, which is our information and reports. So we just have our, uh, city school newsletter, our upcoming events. Again, as Carrie pointed out, August 12th is the Indigenous Education Committee meeting at 4:00 PM at the Seneca Nation Education Department. Our next board meeting is the 18th, 5:30, uh, via Zoom for the board members here at the multipurpose room. And as Bob stated, our welcome back picnics are postponed. So thank you everybody for tuning in. And again, if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to either a board member, the school administration, uh, on our webpage or whatever it needs to be, uh, to get your questions answered. Because we're all here to, to help and support one another and thank you for attending tonight. And we need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Dale, second by Brad, all in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. Everyone?